The March 9, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Here.
Mr. Buckley?
Here.
Mrs. Hassan?
Here.
Ms. Jisling?
Present.
Mr. Tuttle?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with all its nations and justice for all.
I would like to welcome everyone to the March 9, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System four docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Spectrum Cable, Channel 1026 in Mentor and Channel 1025 in Mentor-on-the-Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mentor, Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. First, we will have approval of minutes. We have our regular meeting, February 9, 2021, and special board meetings on February 16, February 23, and March 4.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Hassan?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes. Next, hearing of the public on agenda items only. Seeing none. Superintendent's Report and Recommendations, Mr. Porter.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of Items 5A1 through 5A2.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President and members of the board, I would like to invite Mr. Crowe, our high school principal, to the podium to recognize the outstanding academic achievement of our National Merit Finalists.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson. I'm excited to be here this evening to recognize three Mentor High School students who qualified as National Merit Semifinalists earlier this year and now have been recognized as National Merit Finalists. Their effort, hard work, and academic excellence should be celebrated in something our students, families, and school system can all take great pride in. Some basic background information from the National Merit Scholarship Program. Of the 1.5 million nationwide PSAT test takers from the 2019-2020 school year, about 50,000 with the highest scores qualified for recognition in the National Merit Scholarship Program, with the top 15,000 qualifying as a finalist. In September, students were notified that they qualified as semifinalists, and then in February, our students learned that they moved on as National Merit Finalists. That means our students recognized tonight are in the top 1% nationally. Besides the recognition as a National Merit Finalist, our students are also eligible for National Merit Scholarships, corporate-sponsored, and college-sponsored Merit Scholarship Awards. At this time, I'd like to introduce our National Merit Finalists, Brendan Friedrich, Nathan Roffus, and Sadie Ziedrich. Congratulations to Brendan, Nathan, and Sadie.
Thank you. Madam President and members of the board, at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Casella to the podium to recognize several student athletes for their outstanding achievement in wrestling, swimming, bowling, and gymnastics.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson. Before I make those presentations, I would like to, on behalf of the athletes and the coaching staff of Mentor High School, thank you for all of your support to allow athletics to continue throughout this school year. I can honestly say that our kids have worked pretty hard to get what they've done, and without your support, we couldn't do that. So they asked me to make sure that I express those thanks to you. We've had a very successful winter season so far, and I'm happy to be here to congratulate several of our student athletes who have qualified for state competitions. Each of these athletes have navigated through this pandemic and continue to work hard to represent Mentor High, their families, and themselves with fantastic sportsmanship and class, all the while competing at the highest levels in the state. First up is our girls' wrestling program. The newest addition to our athletic department has grown tremendously over the past year under the leadership of wrestling coach Ray Lamanna. The members of the girls' wrestling team competed in a district tournament at Lutheran West High School. The top wrestlers from the district tournament qualified for the state tournament at Hilliard-Davidson a few weeks ago. The members of the team who qualified for the state tournament are 9th grader Campbell Spleet, 11th grader Alana Shriver, 10th grader Brianna O'Brien, junior Erica Novak, and freshman Maddie Menchaca. So I congratulate them on a fine wrestling season this year. Next up are members of our girls' swimming team. The team was led by head coach Mr. Colin Kelly. For the first time in several years, our girls' swim team sent a relay to the state swimming and diving meet in Canton. Our girls' 200 free relay team qualified out of the Spire District Meet to earn a spot at the state meet. At the state meet, the girls swam a time of 1 minute 40.64 seconds in this 200 freestyle relay. Members of the 200 freestyle relay team are freshman Juliada Solenka, senior Aaron Farmer, freshman Annie Burrow, and senior Mallory Don Dorfer. The entire swim program had a great season, and the athletes and coaches should be proud of the tremendous season that they've had. Next is our gymnastics program. In Mentor, we are fortunate to host this year's district gymnastics tournament for the first time ever, and out of that, we had a senior gymnast qualify on the balance beam from our district tournament to the state meet at Hilliard-Bradley High School. Ainsley Lyles scored a 9.0 on the balance beam at districts to qualify her for state competition. At the state meet this past weekend, she scored an 8.9 on the balance beam. Congratulations to Ainsley and head coach Jessica Arups on a fantastic season by her and all of the members of our gymnastics team. And finally, our boys' and girls' bowling teams once again had a fantastic season. Both teams were Greater Cleveland Conference Champions, sectional champions, and district champions, and led themselves to the state tournament last weekend in Columbus. Head coach Mike Phillips was named our conference coach of the year, leading the Cardinals back to the state meet. At the state tournament, the girls' team finished ninth overall, and the boys' team finished 10th overall out of over 200 bowling programs in the state of Ohio. Another fantastic season by our Cardinals. So our members of the two teams are: Our girls' program is Gianna Amato, Sophia Kova, Maria Meneri, Emma Randa, Haley Simmons, and Heather Walker. All of the members of the girls' bowling team were named all Greater Cleveland Conference, so the entire team was part of the conference team. Our boys were Tommy Amyot, Nico Calabrese, Anthony Gazella, and Anthony was named Greater Cleveland Conference Bowler of the Year, Richard Ionetta, Evan Lewis, and Blake Rice. So again, our bowling team had another fantastic season. Just in closing, thank you, and we wish good luck to our boys wrestlers who compete at the state meet this weekend and our boys' basketball team, who is in the regional semifinal tomorrow night. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casella and Mr. Crowe. Congratulations to all of these students tonight. We are very proud of their hard work and commitment. Madam President and members of the board, I have the following Board of Education policy listed on the agenda for a second reading, and I am recommending approval of this policy.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President and members of the board, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1, related to certified personnel, and C2 through C4, all related to human resource matters.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Thank you. This concludes my portion of tonight's agenda.
Thank you. We have Board of Education important recommendations under Business.
Okay, it can be. Biennially, the Board of Education has to formally align with one of the educational service centers throughout the state of Ohio. For the past few years, we've partnered with the ESC of Northeast Ohio for programming and financial support. Before, use a document that would formally align us again for the next two years, the 2021-22 year and the 2022-23 year. We ask the board's approval.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Next item? Do we need a motion on that?
Legislative report? I'm gonna put my mask on so I can speak. Thank you, and I apologize to my fellow members and Mr. Porter. Mr. Wilson, my source document didn't come till Monday morning, so... I apologize for the delay in getting that to you by the afternoon Monday, so hopefully you had a chance to read through it. We'll cover some of the points. You've probably seen how many pages there are to it. I thought last month's report for February was lengthy. This one's even longer. It seemed to have a great deal of activity. Put on my glass so I can read this. So, begin with, "The assessment discussion grows as students return to the classroom." The Ohio House on March 4 passed House Bill 67 by a vote of 93 to 1, sponsored by Reps. J. Kyle Kohler of Springfield and Adam C. Byrd, Republican of New Richmond. The bill exempts schools from requirements to administer the American History and of Course Exam. It provides flexibility on the administration of state assessments by lengthening the testing windows and extends the use of final course grades and of course exams through 2023-24 school year. The bill also requires the Ohio Department of Education to seek federal waiver from the accountability requirements. There's a lot here to read. I don't think I'm gonna read it all. See how many pages I'm flipping through here to get to the subjects that I wanted to read about. Recently introduced legislation, House Bill 69, introduced by Reps. Bridget Kelly of Cincinnati and Gerald's of Columbus to increase the state minimum wage to $15 per hour by 2027. And I'm not so sure if this is a competing legislation to it, but there's further legislation on this same subject. Senate Bill 51, introduced by Senators Cecil Thomas and Hersel Craig to increase the state minimum wage to $15 per hour by 2025. Now, the previous one said by 2027. This one, by 2025, and allows municipalities, townships, counties to establish minimum wage requirements higher than the state minimum wage. I'm not sure exactly how many people will be affected by that. It's all the weak care employees and others who are less than 15 at this time. I'm neither saying I support or don't support this. I'm just bringing that up because it seems to be a real hot topic recently. Here's a point that... These short sentences, but I'll tell you what, this subject excites me because Senate Bill 66, introduced by Senator Sandra Williams of Cleveland to establish a career pathways apprentice program. Anything along that... Those lines are just... It's the right direction, and I support that totally. Senate Bill 78, introduced by Senators Craig and Andrew O'Brenner of Powell... Craig is of Cleveland, I believe, to establish June 19 or June 10, Juneteenth, as a legal holiday for which government employees receive paid leave and for which school districts may dismiss school. What comes to mind there is if we eliminate one more day of education, do we have to add another day? And what's the financial impact? Dan, have you given that any thought?
No, but I'll come up with an estimate and send it out to the board.
Because if we eliminate a day of teaching, do we have to add another day?
Usually, June 19 is usually summer, summer break anyway.
Oh, is it? Okay. So, this won't affect us? I don't understand. School districts may dismiss school. Some schools go past the 19th. Now, here's something that affects us, if in fact some energy projects qualify. Senate Bill 89, introduced by Senator Matt Dolan of Chagrin Falls to extend the deadline to December 31, 2030, an application for a property tax exemption for a qualified energy project that uses renewable energy resources. Now, what comes to mind there is if people reduce their property value, that's gonna reduce the property taxes collected. Isn't that correct, Dan?
Potentially, it could be. If it's an addition to an existing structure, it simply would not add to the taxable value of the property. So in that case, we'd be somewhat neutral as far as revenue impact. So it depends on if it's an add-on or if it's part of new construction in lieu of the more traditional systems, then it could reduce what would otherwise be value and impact us.
So it's...
So kind of a... In our community, we have more homes that are being resold rather than new homes. There's some new home construction, but the majority of the residential areas have now been built out.
Okay. So if it's any amount, it might not be noticeable. Any questions or comments on any other topics that you'd like to speak to? I know there's a lot there. That's it. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Tom. I think we need to back up under Business. We missed an item under number two. Does anyone want to speak to that or just move to the motion? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes. All right, thank you. Move on to Chief Financial Officer's Report and Recommendations. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, it's recommended Agenda Items 7A through 7G be approved as presented, and I would just quickly highlight that our monthly financial statements are showing that we are tracking pretty much the budget. We had assumed for this year no negative impact on property tax collections as a result of the COVID-19 crisis, and fortunately, so far, we've not seen an impact. We're overall incomes at 76% of budgeted, last year at this time, 73%. Our overall expenses are tracking the budget as well. We have now spent 59% of the budget with 67% of the year completed. Last year at this time, we had spent 60% of the budget. So again, we're tracking to budget as expected.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hassan?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes. Is there any unfinished... I'm sorry, Dan, is there anything else?
Oh, I should have just pointed out real quickly. We did ask for ratification of the authority you gave me to place the insurance as of March 1. As we had expected, the total cost this year is $21,000 more than budgeted. That reflects some claims activity over the last two years that drove up some of our insurance costs. But again, a manageable change, given where we are in overall budget performance. So this ratifies the authority you gave me last month.
Dan, that's our property and liability insurance for the district, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, and that completes my items.
Any unfinished business? All right, any new business?
Madam President, since this is Mr. Wilson's last meeting with us, I was wondering if I could offer a few remarks.
Sure.
Mr. Wilson joined the district in 2004, and I was at the board office at that time. And I think it was on Monday he started, and on Tuesday, the emergency levy failed. And on Wednesday, the state took over, and we went into state receivership. Throughout the summer, we worked to put on an August 2004 emergency levy, and it passed. And through Mr. Wilson's efforts and the administrative team, Mentor was removed from state control, the second fastest recovery. Dan, your leadership set in motion prudent fiscal management and the establishment of financial safeguards. During your tenure, 10 perfect audits increased the public perception of the district's financial responsibility. You established a positive record of managing the employee benefits program. Six out of nine years, there was either a rate reduction or no increase in health insurance. Overall, you set your commitment to add value to the district as our chief CFO. Medicare reimbursement program, which generated added funding due to your efforts. You sold treasury management services to other local and nonprofits. You established and supported the Financial Citizens Advisory Committee. You helped develop the Cardinal Clinic, featuring an onsite physician that was staffed for our employees. You designed a business model to support CARES, which generated revenue for the district and supported special needs students. And you participated in the development of a partnership with the Mentor Public Library to open the hub for public use. These are just some of the key things that I've noted over the time that I've worked with you. And overall, I think your tenure of 17 years has established our reputation as a prudent fiscal management within the Mentor community. as a prudent fiscal management within the Mennar community. I want to give you my personal thanks as a past Central Office Administrator and a present Board Member. Your contributions to our district are priceless. Best wishes on your retirement.
Actually, we did have a special recognition for Mr. Wilson. If you would, please join me at the podium. I will start by saying this is a very bittersweet moment. As we've shared, Mr. Wilson has announced his resignation for the purpose of retirement after serving as the Chief Financial Officer for Mennar Public Schools for 17 years. And in total, Mr. Wilson has served Ohio school communities for nearly 50 years altogether, in what has been an extremely impressive career. As you know, Dan, we only give out the Crystal Cardinal Award under very special circumstances, and tonight, the Board and I would like to honor you for all that you've achieved. You've certainly earned the Crystal Cardinal, and I hope you can think of your time here in Mennar fondly when you look at it. There is a lot of commendable work that I could mention tonight, but one thing I want to point out for sure is that you did join Mennar Schools Team during an extremely difficult time, and I'm not sure just anyone would have wanted to face that challenge. Our school community is lucky that you were willing. For those of you that don't know, Mennar was in a financial crisis when Dan accepted the job, and then two days into the job, the district was officially declared into a state of fiscal emergency. Dan was an integral part of leading the district to the second fastest financial recovery ever in an Ohio school district. After that, Dan immediately began putting in place prudent fiscal management and institutional safeguards that will prevent any future fiscal crisis. This practice has never stopped. From 17 years ago until today, Dan has always looked for ways to improve our processes. Dan worked hard to gain the public's trust by ensuring responsible spending of our community's taxpayer dollars. His department earned 10 perfect audits from the state of Ohio under his leadership. For many years now, the district has stood on solid financial ground, thanks also to our great leadership and supportive community. As a Board Member, I can tell you how appreciative I have always been to have your guidance and expertise. Your experience in the school finance field is second to none. The knowledge you gained over your career has made you an invaluable leader and a great advocate for Mennar Schools. Your ability to stay connected at the state level has been beneficial for our students and staff. And even though I know careful and conservative fiscal management is always your top priority, you never lost sight of the district's number-one goal, to provide a safe learning environment where students can grow academically, socially, and emotionally. As a Board, we have appreciated your innovation to help us financially support our district goals. From the development of initiatives like the district's five fiscal management beliefs, and the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee, to management strategies for employee benefits that have kept rates down and saved money, to development of a wellness program in the Cardinal Clinic, to ideas that help stretch an emergency levy projected to last four years to 14 years instead, the list goes on and on. Dan certainly has a lot to be proud of. While we are all sad to see you go, we're also happy for you. I know with your dedication to your work, it may be difficult to step away, but I truly hope you will enjoy having more time to spend with your family, and many new memories to make with your wife, children, and your grandchildren. I hope the Crystal Cardinal helps you remember, once a Cardinal, always a Cardinal. We thank you, Dan. Congratulations on your retirement.
I was hoping just to sneak out the door tonight, but thank you so much for the kind words, and this is something I've coveted for years, so this will be very special and prominently displayed. I feel blessed to have come to Mennar and be part of this great district, and help support the Board and current and former superintendents and administrative teams as we've elevated the teaching and learning and the quality of education for all the community's youth. It's been the highlight of my career and something that I will always take with me, and as you noted, I'm not totally disappearing. I will still be active in a much less intense role, so Sandy and I can enjoy our time together and time with our grandkids and sons. But again, I take so many memories away from here, and so grateful for all the support the Board has given me as we've done some innovative, different things.
Any other new business? Next, we have hearing of the public on any item.
I'm Sandy Wilson, and I'm Dan's wife, and I would like to tell all of you about how Dan got here. Jackie Hoynes was on TV the night that I was at home by myself, and I saw her. Jackie was a beautiful person. She was competent, and she was very articulate about what Mennar needed. When Dan called that night, I asked him, "Is she for real?" And he said, "Yes," and I've turned her down four times. So little do all of you know that I'd been in a terrible car accident, and at that time, I wanted Dan to come home. I was tired of him being in Columbus. So over that weekend, I worked it out with Lowell Davis that Dan would come. And he spent wonderful time here, he's met lots of wonderful people, and he has a best friend, Jackie Hoynes. So that's, I thought that all of you should know exactly how he got here, is that it was a family effort. And I wish Mennar the best of luck in continuing to be a wonderful school district.
She's kind. I always called it a conspiracy.
Thank you for sharing that, Sandy. I did not know that background story. That's wonderful. Anyone else? All right. I don't think we need an executive session this evening, is that correct? All right, I guess we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
Nice and quick for you, Dan.
Yes.
I'm charred. Thank you.[1791.63][1791.63]